Good evening. We appreciate your patience. Today is Tuesday, November 7th. This is our regular school board meeting. So I'd like to call us to order. Members present in the boardroom are Members Lesson, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. Joining us remotely are Members Wilson and Jacobs. We also have Dr. Bryant. We have our student Joshua Peck, our student representative. And we also have our executive assistant, Amanda Foster. In addition, we have several staff members that are in the room that are here to provide information if needed. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joshua for the pledge and the land acknowledgement.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where wishes stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all Indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
And thank you very much. That brings us to item three. Actually, before I go to item three, again, I'd like to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board also thanks our students, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district by giving your time, your talents, and your tax dollars. So now we go on to item three, which is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second, moved in second to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any opposition to the motion? Seeing and hearing none. The agenda is approved as presented. Thank you. Now on to item B. We do not have a military report. We do have our student representatives' report. Joshua, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My report is basically just a bunch of conferences. I returned from the World Anti-Bullying Forum, along with two other ASD students with the Anchorage Youth Vote Organization. And we presented our workshop on building resilience together with youth adult partnerships. And we were meeting with a lot of top-of-the-line researchers for bullying. And we also did the Crown Princess of Denmark there giving open remarks. It was held in Raleigh, North Carolina. And we came back. Upcoming up is the AASB Youth Leadership Institute, which is, I believe, this weekend. The Student Advisory Board is sending four delegates for this conference, and we look forward to that. And our next SAB meeting will be November 14th at 8:15 to 10:15 a.m. And we will also have the student advisors, so the student government advisors and the adults who are sort of leading the students are also going to have their own meeting, I think, for the first time in a while. And they'll be discussing SAB and related activities. Thank you.
Very good. And actually, Joshua, I think we have five students. Four from SAB, one from, I think, South. And we also just learned yesterday we have another student from West that will be giving the land acknowledgement. So I'm looking forward and excited to see you guys. Thank you. So I need to ask Member Holloman a question. Did you want to do the presentation of the... You want to do it now or you want to do it during your comments? Okay.
As a point of personal privilege, Rick Whitbeck was the president of the PTSA at Abbott Loop Elementary in its final year. And he wanted to present a scrapbook that is from the Abbott Loop PTA. Any of you that haven't seen a mimeographed piece of paper in a while, this will take you, for people of a certain age, this will take you back to your elementary school years. But it was an artifact from Abbott Loop. And of course, there is no more Abbott Loop Elementary. And his hope was that ASD would find a place, certainly to store it at the very least, and perhaps one day have it be preserved as well. Just has a lot of things that PTA did, different programs, things that went on at the school. And to me, represents the connection between the parents and the building that add a tremendous amount of value to what staff and administrators do every day. So he wasn't able to be here at the right time. He asked me to bring it. And we'll transfer it to you for safety.
All right. Thank you very much. And now we are at item C, which is our goal monitoring, technical report.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. So for today's technical presentation, we're going to discuss our four-year graduation rates. Next slide. So on this slide, you'll see the current board goal, which is to increase our percentage of college, career, and life-ready students to 90% by 2026. And one of the metrics that we use to measure progress towards this would be graduation rates as an informal indicator. With that said, I want to note that the board is still reviewing potential revisions to the CCL goal. But as you recall, we have discussed at length the possibility of formally monitoring graduation rates as part of that new CCL goal. So regardless, I anticipate we'll be monitoring graduation rates for many years to come, regardless of the goal. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see the methodology for calculating four-year graduation rates for your reference in preparation for our meeting next week. Next slide, please. And on this slide, you'll see historical data on the four-year graduation rates and the current evaluation of performance towards this indicator. Thank you. And on this slide, you'll see a disaggregation of four-year graduation rates by race, ethnicity, as well as special populations, including economically disadvantaged students. And on this slide, you'll see the data related to four-year graduation rates by school types. So the different school types would be comprehensive, alternative, charter schools, and special schools and programs. The public or board members may be wondering, how did we categorize and group these schools? That information's on a later slide. Next slide. And the next two slides will describe the ongoing efforts to improve four-year graduation rates. Next slide. So this slide describes the tactics to improve four-year graduation rates. This includes things such as family and community engagement, professional learning, and collaborative data discussions. Next. And on this slide, you'll see the progress on implementation across our four strategic pillars, which include early intervention, data review, core instruction, and our overall college, career, and life readiness transformation that we've discussed at length. And the last slide will just describe the school types referenced. These are the specific groupings for each of the school types we referenced in the previous slide. So with that said, that concludes our technical report. We'll come back to discuss graduation rates at length during our next monitoring discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Our conversation for this technical report will take place at our next meeting. And that will be this 21st, November 21st. Just like to remind board members, as questions come up regarding the report, please send them in so that we can have a robust conversation. Member Lessons, did you have a question or comment?
Yes. It's a reflection that when we discussed these a year ago, I remember bringing up the gap. There's a gender gap in our graduation rates. And I would be very interested in supplementing, seeing a supplement to this report that looks at the 23 rates for... What is the gender gap? Because if you look on our data dashboard, you can look at 22 data, and it's like a 10-point spread in every category. So I think that that needs some attention.
Yeah, thank you, Member Lessons. So I'll ask the team to make note that we want to have the gender data for our next discussion.
Okay. And if it can go on board, can that the week before the discussion? That would be great.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the superintendent on the technical report? All right. Thank you. And we're moving on to our first opportunity for... I need my sheet back. Our first opportunity for public comment. That's item D on the agenda. So now it's time to hear from our public. We welcome your comments, which are very important to the board. The board has set aside an hour at the beginning of its meetings for those who have signed up to give public comment. Those not heard during the first hour, which looks like we'll get through those who were signed up within the first hour today. But if there were others who we did not get to during the first hour, we will hear those at the end of the agenda. So this is an opportunity for board members to listen and for members of the public to inform the school board about your views. Please note the following. All public comments are limited to three minutes. The timer is in front of the deus so that you can track yourself. All speakers will receive a courtesy alert when 30 seconds are remaining. Speaking time may not be given to or shared with others. When your name is called, please come to the podium, state your name, and direct your comments to the chair. Please understand that this is not a time for dialogue. The purpose of this agenda item is for you to inform us about your views. If you have handouts that you wish to share with board members, please give them to Ms. Foster, who is seated to my left, and she will distribute those. Finally, I'd like to call your attention to the document that's at our decorum, boardroom decorum document that is located at the entry as you come in. This is a detail... This details our expectations for decorum in the boardroom. And so we ask that you read through it and govern yourselves accordingly. So with that framework, we are going to continue with our public comment. Our first speaker is Robert Patterson. Robert Patterson, welcome. You have three minutes. Is a mic there? I don't see it. Yes, okay. It's on. There's a little red light. Oops. Pull it up again. Yeah, now pull it down. That red light means it's on.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to begin by thanking the board for the time. I'm here today to discuss a few items. Unfortunately, three minutes is enough time to cover all of them. So here are the two most pressing. The first is the curriculum in my son's sixth-grade social studies class. He is being shown a 10-minute daily segment from CNN called CNN 10. This segment is intended for teachers to use as a discussion of current events and global issues for viewers over 13 years old. The description from CNN says that content should be reviewed by the teacher prior to using it in the classroom. If there are any news segments shown in an elementary school classroom, the content should be relatively PG. When we brought this issue to the attention of the administration, the response was to offer to have my son opt out of that segment. She admitted to only watching three minutes of the October 6th segment and turning it off because it was too much. For accessibility, I am showing the board a still from the segment that has a group of masked men holding what appears to be shoulder-mounted rocket launchers. My concern is that her response is not appropriate to the level of concern that we have regarding the content. As a family, we discuss world events that are divisive with our children, including our six-year-old. But we do not show current-day footage of bombings with white phosphorus, buildings collapsing, missiles from unknown source on to unknown city with no geopolitical context. We do know the source. It is purposely left out of the broadcast. This segment purports to, quote, "represent all sides of a story equally. No opinion, no slant, just effects, and we have a little fun while doing it," unquote. A simple review of this content shows that it is decidedly not fun and does not offer all sides equally. My kid came home asking who was in the buildings that fell. I would like to know how many sixth-grade classrooms in this school district show this content. Are there any classrooms that do show it in schools that aren't Title I? As a district, we owe it to all our students to treat them as the children that they are. It is unfair to the sixth-grade students at Clark to be treated as older or expected to have the capacity to process these image and content in an appreciable way. Secondly, and maybe more importantly, my son has an IEP for dysgraphia, amongst other things, and is supposed to be accommodated by being able to use a computer to complete classwork. He has his own laptop that he uses at home, and we had a Chromebook provided by Yukon School District. These options were not acceptable to Clark, and a new Chromebook was issued. However, it was not issued with a charger. His IEP has been recognized by two of school districts and was not followed by any of his teachers at Clark, with a specific teacher standing out telling him that it was too distracting. As a result of this and other experiences, he was under the impression that the computer was not allowed, despite it being the accommodation needed for his dysgraphia. When we discussed these concerns with his IEP and counseling team, we began to discuss the need for a 504 plan, which was broadly denied as being necessary. We were asked to give the school time to investigate and reply. No such reply was ever received. We began this process a month ago, prior to your last public meeting. We want to let you know as...
Thank you very much, Mr. Patterson. If you'd like to submit your written comments to the board, that would be great. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next, we have Tabitha Boiler. Bowler, welcome. You have three minutes.
I am testifying today as a community member, parent, and advocate and ally to the disabled community and their families. On September 27th, my daughter Wilder was concussed during school. I was first called to inform me of the fall, and on the second call, the nurse reported that Wilder had vomited and was lethargic. They also said that Wilder had seized immediately after the fall. EMS was not called. I picked her up and went directly to the ER. These were the only details I received about the incident, all provided verbally. In the following 24 hours, Wilder's condition worsened. Two more ER visits were made, and on the third, she was admitted to the hospital for three nights. Wilder continued to have episodes of extreme fatigue, seizing, vomiting, and lost her ability to safely stand or walk for over a week. The day after the incident, I requested a more detailed report, and the nurse responded via email with a description said given by the adults who witnessed the fall. I provided frequent email updates on Wilder's condition, including a letter from the hospital to excuse her for her absences. I understand that my initial email correspondence was forwarded to the principal. Less than a week after the incident occurred, I was alarmed by the lack of concern and communication. So I addressed the principal directly, asking for an incident report. The first time I asked, the request was ignored. The second time I asked, the principal responded by saying that what the nurse provided was the most descriptive, that the actual witnesses did not complete the report anyway, and that I would need to contact the elementary education department to ask for the report. Since Wilder's incident, the administration has avoided my concerns and questions. I have been deferred to one person after another, all who have insisted that I cannot have a report. My last correspondence was sent on October 12th, and not one administrator has responded. Wilder has been out of school for six weeks. Tell me liability is not more important to the district than a child's education and well-being. So here we are. I'm embarrassed for the administration. The disregard for disabled students and the disrespect for their advocates is appalling. As caregivers, we don't know what we don't know, and the district preys on that. I am constantly being met with condescension and made to look a fool. Does ASD have an incident reporting procedure? Certainly, email is not considered a formal process for informing parents of a serious incident during school. How many other families have been sent on this runaround only to be ignored in hopes that they will eventually give up? If a student were an abled athlete, it hit their head, seized, and then vomited, would someone have called an ambulance? If the student were part of the general population, would the principal have called their family? Where is the accountability, the integrity, and the due diligence to do better next time? Our disabled children are hidden way into the corners of our schools away from the general population. Inclusion of our children must be requested. Ableism is grossly rooted into the education system and our administrative leaders. Only enable discrimination when they remain silent. It is beyond time for change.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bowler. Next, we have Sammy Glasscut via phone. Is she on the line? Or is... Sammy Glasscut. Okay, we don't see her. We saw her there. So we'll go on, and then I'll swing back. Philip Walters. Welcome, Mr. Walters. You have three minutes.
Madam President, members of the school board, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Philip Walters. I have 19 years' experience teaching in ASD, and I'm the father of two ASD elementary students. CCL, CHAMP, STOIC, MTSS, PBIS, HLP, TFI, PBL, PLCs, CT, SEL, CKH, 4Ds, and PITD. Only one of those acronyms is made up. The rest have all been referenced multiple times this year as initiatives that ASD teachers are expected to address in some form or fashion as part of our jobs. In addition, we must deal with a disruptive change in school start times and a transition of sixth grade to middle school all within the next year. We all know that the main problem in Alaska is education funding, and that is something we have very little control over. So instead, ASD tries to throw literally everything else against the wall, hoping something will stick. But we can only address the symptoms, not the root cause. We have less. Less resources, less personnel. And yet, we are continually being asked to do more with less. Here's another program. Here's another initiative. Here's another grant. ASD has never met a grant it could possibly turn down. Meanwhile, most of the teachers at my school lose at least one planning period per week because we have to cover somebody else's class due to the sub shortage. It is all too much. It has gotten to the point where teachers, who tend to be rules followers by nature, are to the point of saying, "I'm not doing that." What are they gonna do? I've heard that multiple times from teachers at all levels around the district. There are currently 367 internal job openings in ASD. With unfilled openings in nearly every subject area at every grade level, ASD simply cannot afford to lose anybody else. Teachers are leaving the district at alarming rates, and who can blame them? With no retirement plan, lukewarm funding from the state, and a paycheck that gets smaller by the year thanks to rising healthcare costs, those would be enough reasons most people would leave. Add to it all of the added programs, the acronyms I listed before, and you're going to see that X's continue at an increased rate. I'm fortunate to be Tier 2, so you're stuck with me for at least another six years. Most of my colleagues do not have that luxury and have absolutely no reason to stick around. Also, considering that this is a bargaining year, do you really want to pile more programs on the teachers who are already feeling overwhelmed, overburdened, and underwater while they decide whether or not to ratify a new contract? Doing more with less is no longer possible. You have to let us do less with less. ASD needs to back off with the programs and the initiatives and the trainings and the changes and just let us do our job. Cramming another change, like school start times, another initiative, like high school academies, another program down our throats will only make us choke that much quicker and will force more teachers to go elsewhere. I urge you to reconsider all of the many changes ASD is forcing on its teachers, students, and their families this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walters. We'll go back to the phone. Sammy Glasscut. Star 6 to unmute, Ms. Glasscut.
Hi, this is Sammy Glasscut. Can you hear me?
You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a parent of a dual enrollment student who is enrolled as a senior at West High School and at Alaska Pacific University in the Early Honors Program. I'm calling in to encourage the school board to review and change the grade weighting for college coursework. According to the 2324 High School Program of Studies handbook, the Anchorage School Board has approved weighted grades for AP and higher-level ID courses. With an A is normally a four point in calculating a student's GPA. A weighted A is worth five points. A weighted B is worth four points, and so on. This paragraph in the handbook concludes with the following statement. "The Anchorage School District does not offer weighted grades for college coursework." It is this last sentence about the weighted grades for college coursework that causes concern for three reasons. One, no justification is provided. Two, it is not clear if the Anchorage School Board approved this decision. And three, ASD dual enrollment programs are not specifically acknowledged. As such, I question whether this policy was well-vetted and proposed that it be reconsidered. Dual enrollment programs are provided to give students an alternate pathway to ASD's AP and ID classes and provide a stepping stone to college. Using my student as an example, after her junior year of a full load of ID and AP classes at West High, she decided to pursue the APU Early Honors Program. Even though she knew she was risking her GPA for more pressing reasons, she knew it was the right program for her. At best, she will maintain her GPA. But if she receives a B or lower, which is reasonable given that these are her first college-level classes, her GPA may be seriously impacted. While she may be able to demonstrate academic rigor on her transcript, her GPA may prevent her from qualifying for some colleges and scholarship opportunities. Even though she rose to the challenge of taking college coursework from college faculty, her peers will be more competitive with their higher GPA. her peers will be more competitive with their higher GPAs. This is the dilemma and sacrifice that ASD students must consider when taking on dual enrollment. Given that school districts are charged with helping Alaskan students to succeed, they should be helping students to present themselves as competitively in their college applications as possible. Shortchanging our brightest students by negatively weighting the college credits they've earned outside high school in ASD dual enrollment programs doesn't give an accurate picture of students' achievement and is contrary to the ASD mission of "we are a community working collaboratively to educate children for life." As a parent, I can attest that the college-level classes meet or exceed those that might...
Thank you, Ms. Glasscut. If you'd like to submit the rest of your comments to the board via email, that would be appreciated. And now, we're going on to, I think it's Jocelyn Elton online. Jocelyn? Yes. Star six to unmute.
Hello, I'm here.
Yes, welcome. You have three minutes.
I'd like to start today by addressing the lack of timely communication and bad faith communication by employees of the district. Three weeks ago, my daughter went a whole school day without being changed. The teacher has admitted in an IET meeting that he was aware, how he was aware. However, they were short-staffed. He stated this while having my contact information and knowing full well how to get ahold of me. He also verbally assaulted me at the beginning of the year, and I'm wondering if this is a form of retaliation. I also reported this to the school district as well as CPS. I have also recently, on multiple occasions, been offered multiple options for my daughter's education regarding her IEP and bad faith, which means it is being offered to persuade me, then removed after agreement. Starting, stating the options were only a possibility, but were turned down by the Director of Special Education. And for all of this, no apology, no nothing, just gaslighting and denial. I can tell you right now, Dr. Bryant, the ASD and its special education department better learn more honest and flexible conversation skills with parents in the special education community, and learn how to better convey your apologies. It is unacceptable to not even try to do the right thing. Even you, Dr. Bryant, couldn't even handle the door situation I asked you to look into. Dexter has disabled students. They deserve an automatic door that they can easily get open. You passed the buck. You gave it to someone who never even contacted me directly. I had to ask multiple people about it, just for it to be denied because, quote, "The city says we don't have to," unquote. What a lame excuse for exclusivity. The overall tone I receive from the district is one of discrimination. You want to post cutesy pictures of disabled children on your website, but deny them even the smallest necessities for them to have value and be seen in their community. I am disappointed, and please know, I will not go away. Also to add, I just want you to know that the behavior I have received as far as communication is wildly unacceptable. No, you wouldn't expect it from your employee, and as a community member, I expect better of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elton. And that concludes our public comment period for those who have signed up. And that brings us to item E on our agenda. Before we get to item E, if there is, if anyone did not complete their comments, or if you have comments to share with us, please email the board, schoolboard@asdkt12.org. That brings us to our consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull any item off the consent agenda?
Madam President, I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Moved by Member Higgins to accept the agenda as presented. Since we are not all in the same space, we're going to have to do a voice vote. Whenever you're ready, Amanda.
Member Holloman?
Yes.
Member Lessons?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Jacobs?
Yes.
Member Higgins? Member Donley?
Yes.
President Bellamy?
Yes.
And the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented passes unanimously. I'll wait for Amanda to... There it is. All right, thank you. We do not have any action items for tonight. That's item F. Item G is our non-action items. These items will come back before the board for action at the meet, at our next meeting on November 21st. Is there any non-action item board members wish to pull to discuss tonight? Member Donley?
Memorandum number 054.
Contract modification amendment. Okay, item one. Zero five four. Okay.
Five four, that's...
Yeah, I did four five. I'm sorry.
Item number seven. It's approval of the April 2024 bond proposal.
All right. Anybody else? Not seeing any? What would you like to... You can go ahead.
Well, first of all, I want to thank staff. I really appreciate the new format for the six-year capital plan. And one of the things it has in it that I think really would be really useful to voters as far as deciding the bond proposal is the information that appears on the six-year plan regarding the funding sources to fully fund the inlet view elementary replacement. And my question would be, will the bond proposition itself reflect the same information that's included in the comments of the capital improvement plan? It points out that for the total cost of a new school, inlet view, it's over $50 million, 26 of which would be from one-time funds the board got that could be usable for any other purpose, including addressing our massive projected deficit for next year. A million 500,000 in the 2013 bond, 3 million 340,000 in 2020 bond, and so that the 18 million 998 that they'd be asking to approve totals altogether with those things, over $50 million for this new school. So my question is, will that be on the actual thing that the voters see when they go into the voting booth, that it's, the cost of this school's not 18 million dollars, it's 50 million dollars?
Dr. Bryant?
Ms. Anderson? So we will take the description of what we put in the CIP, work with bond counsel. But until we talk to bond counsel, I mean, we can talk to them ahead of time. They're the ones who come up with the proposition language. So I'll work with them and definitely provide feedback to the board. I just, I just don't know. We haven't even met with them yet, because there's no proposed bond at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So our, all the items under G will come back to us on November 21st. Moving on to item I, superintendent update. We have no, no other individual signed up for public comment. So Dr. Bryant, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, board and community members. I'll be very brief tonight. I just want to make a couple of comments about the budget deficit and planning. So earlier this afternoon, the full board had the opportunity to begin discussions on the FY25 budget development process. And for the public's awareness, we're facing a structural deficit approaching $95 million, and there is not a painless path ahead. So similarly to last year, our goal is to understand the board's consensus sometime during the month of November, which is right around the corner. And I just want to state for that reason, the administration is happy to hear any and all questions and feedback throughout the coming weeks, because we want to do our best to inform the board's decision-making on this highly complex process. Our next engagement on the budget will be the pro forma discussion on December 5th, and we do have a scheduled Saturday board budget planning session on December 9th. So again, we want to be as helpful as possible, and we greatly appreciate the board's feedback and questions on this topic. And of course, we also look forward to resuming our legislative advocacy work, because we truly need heroes in Juno in order to champion public education in Alaska. And that concludes my remarks.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any questions for Dr. Bryant? Does that frown indicate a question, Member Donley?
I'm just thinking about some of the public testimony we heard tonight. And I'm not certain whether I can formulate it into a question or not.
We could certainly ask for an update in Board Connect. If that would help. Okay? Anybody else? All righty. So that brings us to item J, school board and administration comments. Maybe we'll start online. Member Jacobs, your comments?
No comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Member Wilson?
Sorry, having trouble unmuting. I just wanted to share that I had the privilege of visiting Stellar Secondary, going to talk to their principal, touring the school again. My daughter attended Stellar and just really enjoyed that visit. They're doing great work, and so I like that as one of the many options that our district offers for our students and families. Also attended a school business partnership networking event, and that was wonderful. We had business partners, a lot of new business partners or people, or businesses interested in partnering with schools. Had school staff attend. It was, that was, that was a really good time. I enjoyed that. I appreciate everybody that attended and that is excited about partnering with our schools. So that was awesome. I also wanted to give a shout out to Student Nutrition, because they have been working to, they, they put out this wonderful chicken salad. They're really trying to work on accommodating food that students really want to eat, that are also nutritious. So I just wanted to give credit to the work that they're doing in that regard. I appreciate it. That's, that's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
And thank you very much. So now, we'll come in the room. Member Holloman?
Thank you. I would like to address about some of our administrative regulations that were mentioned in an editorial by one of our board members in the past week or so. And the implication is that the district, and when you say the district, you really mean the staff, are working to keep parents in the dark about situations with their children at school. And I'll say, as someone that spent a few years in our buildings, working with kids, every teacher knows that parent involvement is the best route to success. That if what's happening at school is reinforced at home, if what's happening at home is reinforced at school, that's the optimum, and that's the ideal thing that we all want to have. And that's what happens, I think, in most of our homes. But it doesn't happen in every single home. And there are times where some kids have very limited access to adults that they can trust, and in a setting where they can feel safe, and they will confide in a staff member and ask for confidentiality. The existing policy from the district, to me, gives staff the option of considering it for secondary. It strongly implies that parents should be contacted for elementary students that say want to have a change in pronouns or want to be identified as a different gender. But at secondary, it leaves it open for those situations. And all I can really say is that for a lot of us that have what I'm going to call fairly normal home-wise, it's impossible to imagine the home life of some of our students. If the idea that the food at school is really good, and there are the cleanest bathrooms you've ever seen, if that's alien to you, you don't understand where some of our students are coming from. Because the reality is, for some students, school is a marvelous structure where they can be safe. There are rules, and if you stay within them, you don't get yelled at or hit, or you shouldn't. And it's in stark contrast to what they endure outside of school. So I mainly want to just stop and say, I think all good ASD teachers, and I think most of them are, and the fact that we, that we can't have completely all good teachers goes more to pay and staffing and other issues. But all good teachers want parents connected. They want parents to know what their students are doing in school, how they're behaving in school. Secondary is a time where a lot of students start to create a wall between home and the rest of their lives. They, they want to make friends that they may not want to take home. They act in ways that they would not want their parents to see. And I will say, I think most teachers try to eliminate those walls. We are just a couple of weeks out from parent conferences, where everybody works into the evening to meet with as many parents as possible, to talk individually, one-on-one with parents, about what they see their child doing, what their strengths are, what their weaknesses are, and to hear from parents about what's going on in school. I don't for a moment want to suggest I think things are perfect. They absolutely are not. People run out of time. Some people don't try as hard as they should. But I do think the general disposition of our professional staff is for clarity and honesty. When they know it's safe, and this is one of the other aspects about being a teacher, you get an annual training on being a mandatory reporter, on when you are compelled by law to contact OCS to report a child that's in danger. And it's a dramatic thing to have to carry. It's not exactly the same thing as carrying a handgun, but it's kind of similar mentally, in that it's, it's a dreadful thing to have to use, and yet a necessary thing at certain points. And I do think the overwhelming majority of our staff do it carefully. They care rather deeply about the safety of the kids in front of them, and realize that some of them are at risk when they are out of the building. So I just, I think it mischaracterizes what the staff is able to do. I think it mischaracterizes what the policy does. I think the policy encourages openness and communication with parents, but allows for the exception in cases where there's uncertainty about its, the safety of it. And I just want to applaud staff for what they do and the difficulties that they face in trying to help certain students on a day-to-day basis. Thank you.
And thank you very much, Member Holloman. Okay, Member Lessons?
Thank you for the comments just before now. I want to speak to a few things. Number one, as somebody who has rummaged through archives around the country, I would strongly urge ASD to maintain some kind of an archival system and/or donate something like that Abbott Book to the University of Alaska or the Anchorage Museum, where it can be safely cared for and celebrated and examined and seen as a piece of daily life in Alaska. Separately, I think a lot of these comments really focus on my concerns about the district's finances. So I appreciate the deep dive we did earlier this afternoon. I urge community members who didn't attend the work session to look at the slides that were shared. This board has some really terrible decisions coming because of closing a $95 million or more larger structural deficit next year. Like, I don't have the right word for it. It's inconceivable. It's unfathomable. It's a, it will decimate public education as we know it. It's a, it will decimate public education as we know it. To that end, so serving as the treasurer and chairing the finance committee meeting, we did at our meeting last week review last year's annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFIR. And we also had a brief overview of steps HR has taken to help reduce costs associated with our healthcare plan management. I think that was an important part of the conversation. We, there have been a few board members that are working with Assembly Partners on a joint resolution. Info from today's budget session presentation will be really helpful. So again, thank you for the, to the team for that. I think the best part of my week last week was getting to spend a little bit of time at Campbell STEM. On a student engagement day, there were dozens of community partners there from Anchorage Waste Water and ASD's capital projects to REEP, doing renewable energy. The kids were engaged. They were exploring. They were creating. They were innovating. They were practicing the scientific method, which is so deeply embodied in their philosophy. It was really joyful. I also spent time last week at the PLC Institute that the Massus District hosted here in Anchorage. I walked into the convention center and was surrounded by hundreds, I don't know how many educators are there, but thousands of educators. And I really found the smaller sessions that I was able to attend to be very valuable and helping me understand what exactly this PLC process might entail. It's a multi-year process. I guess we so often are searching for a quick answer to something and speaker after speaker share that it's a three to five-year journey. So as we get staff conditioned to how to engage with one another and how to ask the questions and how to dive into the data, that we're going to see changes, but it might be a, a three or five-year process. I was really struck in one session by the importance of small, immediately actionable formative assessments. We have our data discussions, right? We get these reports based on our board goals, and I wasn't really sure what our PLC teams were supposed to be looking at. The same data, different data? And a great example was, let's take three kindergarten teachers. And if there's a standard on how a student is supposed to write their names, it's really important that the teachers all understand, well, Teacher A, how do you think a student is supposed to write their name? It may be proficient, but for that first teacher is, you know, capital first letter and perfectly spaced subsequent letters. And for the second teacher, all caps is fine. And for the third teacher, switching a D with a B is fine. Well, it's really important that the teachers and that team have the opportunity to come to an agreement on what that assessment is and what proficiency is for that particular standard. So that was like an aha moment for me. One of the, the websites that I put down, it's called allthingsplc.com, where you can search for model schools and districts. In fact, some may align with ASD that have been on this PLC process. And Anchorage is kind of unique. There aren't a lot of districts that look like us, but there might be a few here and there sprinkled to just better understand that arc of change, that three to five-year process. So I found that really valuable, wanted to share it. I am looking forward to this week's AASB as long as we don't have a foot and a half of snow. And just to be clear, I intend to work with our representatives and other districts to get them, to get the AASB to unanimously support a BSA increase of no less than $1,413, much as we did last year with an $860 figure. It was a really joyful moment a year ago to get the entire ballroom voting in support of that BSA increase, which I thought catalyzed the work that the legislature did to try to, to move the needle. And then drilling and thinking about the comment from the individual who said, who pleaded with us that we do less with less, as we look ahead to our goal and guardrail discussion, I don't see how our available resources are going to support student performance, let alone 80% rates of proficiency. I think that's just an important, we're not going to be aspirational. We cannot, we literally cannot afford to be aspirational. And I, I think that there is good in that aspiration, but we don't have the funds coming from the state of Alaska to support those aspirations. So I think that's a part of the conversation.
Absolutely. Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. In response to the prior comments regarding the concerns that I have expressed regarding the administrative guidelines advising not to notify parents of secondary students regarding pronoun and, and name decisions by their, their children, I'm not sure about the implication. I don't think any implication is necessary. The guidelines say what they say. And they specifically say that, that normally, parents of secondary students should not be informed, do not need to be informed. They say that. And that's where my concern lies. It makes a presumption against the legitimacy of the parents knowing. I fully recognize there's, there's times where if there are legitimate concerns about safety of our, our students, they should be evaluated. And if they exist, you know, that's a different circumstance. But this existing guideline makes a presumption against parents. And I think that's wrong. We should always start with the presumption being in favor of parents receiving notification unless for some good specific reason, judged in that specific case, there's a reason not to. And that's what the resolution that I put forward would change this guideline to do that. So I think it's a big difference there. The, the existing guidelines have never been adopted by this board. They were adopted as administrative guidelines. They're not even regulations, administrative regulations. So policy needs to be adopted by the school board. This is a very serious policy, and it's never been voted on by this board. And then, once the board adopts a policy, the administration may adopt an administrative regulation based on that policy. This is not an administrative regulation. It is a guideline put forward by the administration that directs, it says the parents typically should not be advised. I think that's a serious mistake. And the resolution I put forward would reverse that presumption and say generally, parents should be advised of these important decisions in their students, in their children's lives. I also think there's other really serious questions with this guideline that's been adopted, these guidelines. And I raised these with the superintendent before, over a year ago, regarding the safety of other students. There's nothing in these guidelines about the safety of any other students. And as the father of a 16-year-old daughter, I'm very concerned about that. And I'm still waiting for a response from the superintendent regarding what is the guidelines being presented by this administration for the protection of all our students, which I think should be addressed within these guidelines if they're going to exist also. So I think there's very legitimate concerns here. I think the presumption should be in favor of the parents knowing unless there's some specific articulatable or evidentiary concern with that presumption. But to start from the point where parents should not know about what's happening with their children at school is simply wrong.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Member Higgins?
Well, this is one of those times I really do have a lot of time.
No, you don't.
I, I want to start by saying, I want everybody to understand that I had nothing to do with the selection of speakers tonight, even though it's the subject I want to talk about. And it, just the coincidence is very good, okay, from my perspective. Because the concerns being raised tonight are not singled out, to me, they were systemic. There were serious issues that need to be addressed. You know, the National School Board Association says that the role of the school board is to be an app, to be the voice of the public. We need to set directions and we need to hold accountability. So we have some very key roles there. When we know things are wrong or we know there are issues, that puts us on extra notice of what our responsibility is. When I first got on the school board, back in 2008, okay, I'm up there in age, everybody knows that, there was a, an issue regarding a parent that had a concern about their child paying for sports and the child wasn't able to participate in it. And it really wasn't quite as bad as it sounds because they were upset that the child didn't go to the state for the finals, so they thought that was being cheated. But that's all right. The, the administration was hit up on it. The administration said, whatever the superintendent, and whatever the principal decides, that's the final decision. Well, they're telling them that you go above the principal, we're not going to do anything. That was a serious concern to me. We have a crisis in the school district. If we don't have a system for people above the principal, where to go? Where to raise issues, safety issues? I've seen that, serious safety issues. And we don't have a process that, that staff knows where to go to and, and the administration knows this, the board should know it. We've been through it. And to me, we're jeopardizing the safety of all the kids and staff and visitors. If we don't have a system where we have safety concerns, that we can go above the principal and they know where to go to. And they know they're protected and we have a, no retaliation, no anything. But we don't have a system out there. And I feel bad about that. Because if somebody gets hurt because of that, if it doesn't get reported, we're going to end up with more injuries. That's, that's unacceptable to me. I'm, I'm passionate about this. I had been arguing for a couple of years about an audit committee, an operational audit to address these issues. And this is, this was a passionate night for speakers and it's a passionate night for me because I've been fighting this too damn long. I'm sorry. But there's a limit to this. And knowing that we got the problem and not doing anything about it makes us guilty. That's where I'm at on this issue. We have a bunch of operational audits. I appreciate the superintendent's role of being neutral, whatever the board wants. Of course, during the same meeting, we hear questions about the staff, how much time it might require on these issues. I don't care. The savings is big. We want to look at the issues. You want to talk about procurement. I gave one example before where it's $800,000 savings where procurement was requesting something and it really wasn't appropriate. Where we got the policies, what do we have reviewed? It doesn't cost much for the operational, for audit to come in with the council of great city schools and do something and take a look at it. See what we can do. And if we got problems, fix it. Not fix the blame, go forward. But we're not doing that. To me, we're not. Healthcare, tremendous cost if you want to look at the liability. I remember 10 years ago when we had an issue with healthcare and we had a question about the auditors, I mean, the brokers being paid by us and the insurance, so we corrected that. But those are the types of reviews that you need to do. We have an audit going on, I appreciate that. But the fact that the board didn't have a chance to even provide some input about the issues that we're aware of, I found was inappropriate. And then the response is, we can do another one later. We got big issues and these are big money. This makes the budget look small. This is unacceptable to me. We, we've got so many different options out there and issues that we need to address. And I am passionate about the board being a role in that. Now, we have the issue of an internal audit committee. I am glad that the governance committee is doing something. I appreciate that. And I didn't bring up the idea of establishing a separate internal audit committee because I'm afraid that would slow it down and that would be a basis of saying, okay, we have to stop. I don't want that. I think we need to address that issue, but I don't want to do it and slow down the governance from doing finally a review about some of these audits. And I don't care how much staff is involved. We'll talk about that. We'll talk about the cost benefits and what we need to do. But somehow or another, discouraging the board from doing audits with that type of statement, I found was disappointing. And that was done at the same time while the superintendent is saying he's open to whatever the board decides. I think it needs to go further than that. We need to be aggressive about the opportunities of saving public funds. We've got to recognize safety is our number one project, number one responsibility for kids. And if we have issues that are impacting that, we have an obligation to do something about it. And I am passionate that we need this addressed, and I mean now. And I'm tired of it. I'm sick and tired of the fact that we may have kids at risk. And, and like, and if we have an issue and the principal is not supporting it, where do staff go? They don't know. I was helping someone, went through the process and they said on a safety issue, if you wanted to address, go to OSHA, go to, go to the state. But they didn't do anything internal. This wasn't that long ago. We've got, we've recognized we got a problem. The issue today is just reflective of the past and it needs to stop. And everybody on the board and the administration is responsible for the safety of every kid. And we need to stop talking about it? We need to start doing something about it. And that means it starts with us and we need to be working together to do it. I am tired of it. I am so tired of it that the, the speeches tonight really hit me hard. Because I know this is going on. We don't know how big the problem is. That's the biggest thing. When you see a problem, don't try to fix the problem. Do that if you want. But you better find out why the problem caused and what you need to do to prevent future problems. So we don't know the scope of that problem. We don't know the scope and that, we know that. And so I am begging that we get this thing moving and we get something done. And it's a responsibility of superintendent, this board and the administration to get behind the fact that safety is number one. We've got issues to deal with and we need to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Higgins. Mr. Pat, do you have any closing comments?
No extra comments tonight.
No extra. I know, that's a hard one to follow. Thank you. Anyway, today's work session was very, very good. So I, I would like to join Member Lessons in inviting members of the public to review, to at least stream that. I mean, it, it's available. We've started discussing budget cuts in August. And, and really, we've got to make some devastating choices. There's, it, there's just no way to make up a almost $100 million deficit by remaining status quo. It's impossible. But we do want to be as transparent as possible and we want people to continue to voice their concerns, voice their desires, voice what they value, but help us advocate. Help this board, this community advocate to the legislature to make sure that our kids get what they deserve. Yes, we do a great job. The staff does a great job. We go to Juneau. Everybody can't go to Juneau, but you can write a letter. You can make a phone call, talk to your legislator. We, we had a wonderful meeting with the, with, with some legislators, probably a month ago now. And I do feel, while everybody's not going to be for an increase, a BSA increase, but lots of people are. And I believe in changing hearts and mind. I think the information and the data that we are going to be able to present, much like with the joint resolution from the Assembly, we, really, I think we, but we need parent voices. We need student voices. Because you, we hear you. I mean, we hear what you, we hear the programs you desire. We hear the choices that you, and we, we really have spoiled ourselves. We have created situations where schools can make themselves special or they can alternative, offer something extra cool, and then it sucks kids away from schools. I mean, we've allowed that. And I, and that was a choice. We allow zone exemptions so that kids who should be in one side of town, they get to go to another. I'm not against it. I'm just saying, when we have, you know, as we go through this process of, of reducing and our budget, not reducing our budget, but balancing our budget and rightsizing our district, it is going to take, it's going to take a lot. And the board, we, we, I, I think we have a fantastic board, but we are not magicians and we can't just will it so. So as we continue, the legislative session is not in, they don't, I don't think they go to Juneau until the 15th of January. We are currently working on our legislative priorities. We will have those available so that people can understand, you know, what, what is it that we're advocating for? But if you do nothing else, share what you value about. But if you do nothing else, share what you value about public education, about your family's experience. Because that's, that's the missing voice. Nobody can tell your story like you. And so I do want to encourage that. You've already heard that we're going to be tweaking our goals and guardrails. And I also heard Member Lessons talk about us being, you know, us being aspirational in terms of proficiency and what that might mean in terms of our discussion. So we will have that discussion on November 16th, if people are interested in hearing the goals and guardrail work session. The work session on the governance committee, Member Holloman is the chair. He has set a meeting for November 29th, two to four. And so some of the issue that Member Higgins just referenced relative to audits, the governance committee is charged in our bylaws with that responsibility. But there will be a discussion on how we're going to proceed to make sure that we are, you know, getting the systemic input that we need. And I think finally, the AASB conference, you've heard, I'm hoping Members Lesson and Higgins will serve on the resolutions committee. And that will be all day, that's all day, barring some snow. I mean, I don't know, but it's all day. Nine? Don't frown. I think we start at 8:30 and we go to four. But there will be breaks in between and we'll be working with other school board members from around the state. And so with that, that concludes my comments. I do want to thank everybody that testified. And I really, I, we hear what you're saying. We are not in the schools every single day, but we, safety of all of our kids, respectful communication is the standard. And so whatever we need to do to make sure that that is a systemic expectation and reality, the board heard every word that you said. And so now that brings us to, oh, Member Holloman, you have?
Just a very quick note, the governance committee meeting you cited is exclusively for operational audits. It's not regular meeting of the governance committee.
Absolutely. Thanks for the clarification. I appreciate it. Okay. So now that, we're on item J2. I don't know, any administrate, any of you guys over in the gallery, would you like to make any comments? I see smiles. I don't see any hands. Okay, I'll move on. The one thing I would like to remind, and I can send next week, next month, I mean, no, our next meeting on the 21st, according to our engagement calendar, we have the native advisory committee coming before giving a report to the board, using the framework that we came up with in communications. So we'll look forward to that. We had to reschedule the MECAT committee because we're moving it back a little bit because they just, they're just having their meetings. So, I mean, they've just had their first meeting of the year just a couple of weeks ago. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
Moving second to adjourn. Any opposition to adjourn? Hearing and seeing none, we are adjourned.